Good evening, everyone. I'm calling this meeting a term time Board of Education meeting at 7:00 p.m. And I ask for you to join me if you're able to say the Pledge of Allegiance before a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public notice of all meetings is given by communication from the superintendent's office to those news media who have filed a written request for such notice and the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, and Express News. Public notice has also been posted in all schools and buildings throughout the district, on the school district's website, and on the cable television channel ninety-six.
Thank you. Roll call, Jane.
Satterberry.
Here.
Loeb.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Barney.
Here.
Speed.
Here.
And Larson.
Here.
Board member Medved, absent excuse.
Thank you. Item number two, approval of the agenda.
To approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Run to item three, citizen comments. No one signed up on the green sheet when anybody liked to speak tonight? Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, great. Good evening. Could you state your name?
Yes.
And welcome.
Do you want me to use the mic? Yes.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jan— well, I don't think it's on. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jan Miller. I live at W-151 and 10297 Windsong Circle West. I've been a resident of Germantown for over twenty-five years. I live just south of Donjes Bay Road, so I'm right down the block in Windsong subdivision. And tonight, I'd like to bring to your attention one of the events that the school board is participating in, and that is the sale of the property on Donjes Bay Road, which was designated in the 2020 plan as a park or school. And as the board may recollect or not, the referendum was voted down twice for a school, and it has remained vacant for all these years. As a matter of fact, I have a neighbor that said the property on Donjes Bay Road adjacent to Kinderberg Park has been adjacent— uh, empty for thirty-five years. It is a wetland. It has five wetlands on it, and it is a beautiful open area. I believe that over ninety percent of the neighbors believe that it's just part of the park itself because it's been vacant. There are walkways around it, and people walk their dogs and themselves and the kids, and it's a great place to be. Open air and green space is a vital part of any village, any city, and saving property and keeping it green is important, I think, for not only us as adults, but also as—for It's all about ecology and keeping things green. So I came tonight to just offer to the board here, Bob and Sarah and Mike and Brian's not here, Lester and Ray and Tom, an opportunity to think outside of the box and explore alternative solutions to that property. So does it have to be thirty homes, twenty-seven, twenty-four, sixteen? You know, bingo, here we are. I think that there are other opportunities for that piece of property, and I would welcome discussing that with all or any of you that has time, and we can talk about it later.
Great.
But I just want to throw that idea out, that there are other solutions, and there are— there is a huge community here in Germantown that would like to speak to that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate your consideration.
Great. Thank you for coming. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? Okay, moving on to item four, approval of the January twenty-third, 2020 closed session minutes, the January twenty-seventh, 2020 Board of Education minutes, and the January twenty-seventh, 2020 closed session minutes. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve the January twenty-third closed session, January twenty-seventh Board and closed session minutes.
Second.
Tom? Okay, great. Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Item five, reports and information items, tech ed programming audit and report. Mr. Holmes.
Yes, tonight, Ms. Brenda O'Brien's going to be providing the board with a report in regard to—or an update on a report from the Office of Civil Rights that took place in regard to our tech ed programming. As you saw in the background, generally, when a district has been audited by the Office of Civil Rights, it's sometimes a daunting and scary thing that occurs. However, in this case, I am proud to report that the findings from that report are good for Germantown School District. The things that were found are minor issues that we can easily correct. I'm actually glad that they came in, and when they left, they actually told us in terms of a burgeoning tech ed program with all the facilities that we now have in place, they're excited about the things that we're capable of doing and the things that we are already doing in that regard. And with that, Ms. O'Brien?
Sure. Three DPI representatives were visiting our district for two days in late January. So during those two days, they did some site visits at both Kennedy Middle School and our high school. They interviewed staff as well as students about programming specifically around technology education or business education as well, and reviewed two binders' worth of artifacts that we had to collect prior to this audit. So we received an official letter of findings that was explained in our exit interview about different things that we need to do moving forward to bring us into some compliance requirements. So we have a year to submit those changes. So I just wanted to highlight a few. I did share the draft of the corrective action plan with all board members. And so Section A really is about consistency of language. We do have the non-discrimination policies as well as the statement on all of the documents that are required, but it's just not as consistent of language as what they'd like to see. So we will be receiving that statement and then just updating all of that, as well as our compliance officers. So those are the internal employees that people can contact in case they have a question about discrimination. And so that was also inconsistent with some of our policies, as well as in handbooks and things like that, that we want to clean up some of that inconsistency there. Section C is about reviewing and creating plans for reviewing the counseling services that we provide to our students, and so we did submit evidence and artifacts of that, and DPI simply overlooked that during the process. So they are in process of reviewing those documents and will let us know if we need to make any changes with that. Section E is about our scholarships that we offer to students. It's missing a non-discrimination statement, so I did reach out to the Germantown Community Scholarship Fund members to say that I'd like to work with them to add that, as well as a review of the recipients of those scholarships to make sure that we don't have any disproportionality with the receiving of those funds. And then Section F is about the counseling team at the high school. Again, we take a look at all the course enrollments, and what we'd like to be able to do is put a plan in place and procedures for, again, looking deeper at the students who are taking individual classes, especially in technology, education, and business. And then finally, we did have some sections— just— Section F was about our facilities and especially handicap accessibility, functions of that and our facilities. So Don Erickson is aware of some of the changes that need to be made with those, particularly the pressure on doors that are set a little bit too—with too much pressure. So he's going to be reviewing those as well. And then Section J is just, again, some inconsistencies that we have with some of our hiring statements and some of our postings that we do, that sometimes, again, the language is inconsistent with that. So I'm working with Mr. Noack to make sure that we are updating those as well. So again, we do have a year to make those corrections, but just wanted to highlight some of those corrections that we do need to make.
Great. Questions, comments? I just want to thank you for a great audit, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Great. Moving on to— oh, I have one thing. I was just made aware that this week is School Bus Driver Recognition Week, February ten through the fourteenth. So when you leave here, if you see a school bus driver, thank him or her for doing a wonderful job. We've had a long relationship with Right Way. They do a wonderful job in conveying all of our students throughout the many schools that we have in the district. They do a wonderful job, and— again, I'll thank the school bus driver tomorrow when I see one, but they're—they do a great job for us, so. All right, moving on to item six, new business discussion and action to approve elementary attendance boundaries. Mr. Holmes.
Yes, many months ago, we started getting the process of the redrawing of elementary attendance boundaries for elementary schools in Germantown School District. Two years ago, when we first attempted this—I can remember when we got to this—almost to this point, we had a hundred and fifty people in the room in regard to elementary attendance boundaries. Given where we are now, where I noticed that we do have some folks in the audience—I don't know how many are here for elementary attendance boundaries—but from my perspective as a superintendent, the process has been a lot smoother this time than it was the last time. I think we learned a whole lot from that first process, our ability this time to hold informational meetings at the elementary— each elementary school and then one district-wide meeting. I greatly appreciate Transportation Committee, the work that they did, our guide K-12 consultant and the work that he did in the board. The fact that we were able to get to this point now, particularly over the last couple of years, the research that I had done in regard to school districts going through this process and how difficult and challenging it can be, I am very appreciative of everyone, from parents to staff members to administration and everyone else that helped move this process along to get us to this point tonight where I am able to bring forth a recommendation that I do believe has taken into consideration all the insights and opinions and perceptions of individuals in regard to what is a multifaceted and challenging topic. So having said those things, what I would like to bring forth to the board is the recommendation to approve elementary attendance boundaries as indicated on the accompanying document in your packet, Document A, with the shared areas remaining intact from the previous boundaries. Additionally, allow for the grandfathering of 2019-20 school year students in grades K through four, which would be next year's first through fifth graders, with the stipulation that parents who choose the grandfathering option for those students are responsible for the transportation associated with grandfathering, as indicated on Document B, and in accordance with the grandfathering process that is included on Document C.
Thank you. I'll just comment before I turn it over to the chair of the Transportation Committee that this whole process—I would agree with you, this whole process was extremely transparent. I attended a couple of the sessions at the elementary schools and the district-wide session, and it—we listened, and we listened a lot, and we came back to the board many times with thoughts, recommendations, and they were incorporated into the final recommendation on the grandfathering. So I want to applaud the Transportation Committee for doing the heavy lifting on this, but I want to thank our colleagues on the board for listening as well, because this was the right thing to do, so. Mr. Barney.
Yeah, I agree. It was a tough process, but I'm glad we were able to get out in the schools and hold that separate community meeting so that we could hear everybody's perspective. Transportation Committee has not meant to update a recommendation to the board, so at this point, on behalf of the Transportation Committee, I'll make the recommendation that we approve what Mr. Holmes read, and I will repeat it again for the record. Approve the elementary attendance boundaries as indicated on the accompanying map, Document A, with the shared areas remaining intact from the previous boundaries. Additionally, allow for the grandfathering of 2019 to 2020 school year students in grades K through four, which is next year's school grades one through five, with the stipulation that parents who choose the grandfather option for these students are responsible for the transportation associated with grandfathering, as shown in Document B, in accordance with the grandfathering process shown as Document C.
Have a second?
Second.
Do have discussion? Sir?
I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Satterberry, you, Mr. Barney, and you, Mr. Gordon, for all the work. I missed one meeting, the last meeting, I believe, and I'm sure that you reported out on that one very well, and thank you for that.
Thank you. Other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Moving on to item B, discussion and action to approve facility use fee waiver request. Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. There are two fee waiver requests on the agenda tonight. One entitled Germantown Community Scholarship Fund, which is really the annual Mud Splash event, and the second one is Milwaukee Kickers Soccer Club, which probably is best re-identified as the Germantown Soccer Club, and there are representatives from that group to discuss their request with you tonight. Is there somebody from Mud Splash here?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I don't know that we met. So we have representative from Mud Splash, and the background information is here in the same format as previous requests for fee waivers, so would you like to proceed?
Great. Seeing that we have a representative from Mud Splash, come on forward. And what I'd like to do is have a vote for the scholarship fund and also then for the soccer club, two separate votes. So welcome.
Thank you. So we are excited to host our fifth event at the high school in June, on June twentieth. In 2015, sixteen, seventeen, and the nineteen—we skipped eighteen because of the construction— we've given thirty-four grants back to the teachers in the district. All of the proceeds from our event go back to district teacher grants. We've given over $24,000 back to the district, and so we are asking that you would approve the fee waiver for our event.
Cool. Will there be lots and lots of mud?
Absolutely, of course.
Comments, questions? Sir?
The map, which I think is a satellite photo—
Yes.
—doesn't include the Performing Arts Center and the parking lot that's showing it go through woods, so you've taken that into account?
We have, yes. Um, yeah, this first diagram, yeah, for some reason, it doesn't have the PAC on here. But we don't use that—that area is totally roped off. We don't use that area at all, that parking lot or up into the building. That whole area is roped off. We do use the grass up behind, but the course circles around, as you see on the map, and comes back through.
Okay. I mean, I think it's fine for you to run through the parking lot.
Yeah, I think last year, there was still some construction, so we'll probably stick with the same course. It worked really well last year, so.
Memory serves me right, isn't there a fence there you can't run through? Well, you'll find it.
Yeah, we don't come close to where the lot is, anyway.
You have to jump the fence.
Jump the fence.
Well, now that can make it interesting.
While they're here, I would like to remind the board that I was reminded by C.D. Smith that, again, they do plan in the spring, late spring, to bring in their drones and to get overhead photos of all of our properties for us this spring.
Cool.
So we should have new photos in that regard.
Fantastic.
Great. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Germantown Community Scholarship Fund request for fee waiver.
Second.
Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Great, thank you so much.
Have fun. Okay. Rick, soccer club.
Yeah, would you— can I invite the gentleman up?
You can invite them up.
Not up, guys. While they're coming up, I'm looking at the policy that the board adopted back in December of 2018, and I think what they're asking for is to be placed in Priority Group Three, which would make the fees attached—if you multiply that by twenty-five percent—for a fee reduction. And if you— so if you multiply that by twenty-five percent, that would be the fee. If you grant them a waiver, the fee would be zero, right? So they're in Priority Group Four right now, so if I can just remind the board what Priority Group Three is, it might be helpful. Germantown School District affiliated groups and community groups must have fifty-one percent of the membership being Germantown School District residents and/or Germantown School District students, which are assessed usage fees at the twenty-five percent of the schedule, as I was just mentioning, and they have eighty-some percent. Priority Group Four says nonprofit organizations— outside organizations—must include a 501(c)(3) for proof of tax exempt or organizations with less than fifty-one percent membership. Now, the reason that they're put there—and this goes back long before I even knew many of you, so this goes back a decade or two, and I think some of the confusion or the pickle that they get into relative to Milwaukee Kickers and not having quote-unquote "an address here in Germantown" that says, "It's the Germantown Soccer Club," or whatever they would call them. So I'm going to stop there, and you guys can sell your requests.
For sure. Good evening. My name is Justin Latham, thirteen-year resident of Germantown and elected as the club director last July, having been on the board member for almost two years before that. To give you a little bit of history, Milwaukee Kickers was a soccer organization founded in 1968 and currently has fourteen regions throughout the metro Milwaukee area, from the south Milwaukee to the lake. The farthest west, I think, right now is Menominee Falls and us to the north. As a region, each region has a board and acts autonomously within the Milwaukee Kickers infrastructure with—and underneath their 501 status. So we have our own board, we make our own local decisions for our communities to, you know, for the appropriate soccer club at hand. So our financials flow through the Milwaukee Kickers. We currently have three hundred and fifty-one players registered to Germantown Soccer Club and have been operating as Germantown Soccer Club for over thirty years. Out of those three hundred and fifty-one, two hundred and seventy-nine are registered at Germantown Addresses, with some of the others on the peripheral edges, such as Jackson out to the other side of Colgate and some in Falls and also some Maquon to the east. We obviously can't play soccer in the snow, so we leverage the school facilities in the wintertime for indoor training sessions, and we do not pass the costs along to our players. It's built into their fees, essentially, and so any access we have to the school gyms, which has been really extremely beneficial for our kids for the winter months, is what we look to take advantage of and are currently taking advantage of, four or five days a week at this point in time. So we appreciate that collaboration. I think the reality of it is, is we are an independent organization within a Milwaukee organization financially, but really to the benefit of our community and plan to be so or to do so for the future. So we're looking for that fee waiver adjustment from Level Four to Level Three tonight. Any questions?
No. Who's this guy right next to you?
Paul Hammond, Fields Director, longtime Germantown resident.
I know, yeah. Cool. Questions, comments? Sir?
Mr. Erickson, if they were coming in fresh and had never dealt with us before, and you received all this information, where would you place them?
I would probably place them in the three, provided that they had the large participation being Germantown School District students, you know, which is the threshold, of course, fifty-one percent. We get a little bit wrapped up, and it's the right thing to do, trust me. When I leave here, don't stop this effort. My replacement has to continue on, and that is to nail down tax exempt status so that we're doing things by book, keeping an arms' distance from organizations who have their own checking accounts and their own cash management. But again, a group like this historically has to be affiliated with a large organization for scheduling purposes and— meaning scheduling matches with other, you know, clubs and that, so I'd put them in the three.
Okay. And they're at seventy-plus percent, right, participation?
Yeah, seventy-one or seventy-nine point five as of this year.
Wow, that's pretty cool.
I mean, some examples of the three are PTA, athletic, called Curricular Booster Clubs, UZAC Athletic Groups, and Scouts.
Yep. Great. Further comments? I'll entertain a motion on going from four to three.
I move to approve the Milwaukee Kickers Soccer Club recommendation or request to move from a Status Four to a Status Three according to our policies and procedures.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Moving on to item C, discussion and action to approve retirements. Mr. Holmes.
I'm going to start out.
I knew you would.
Yeah, it's one where I can't pass it up because this always interests me, particularly when it's this large a size of people that are looking to retire in a single year. When I went through the background and added up the local experience alone, you wind up with a hundred and seventy-six years of local experience. You know, it's always amazing to me when you lose that much institutional knowledge. But everyone that is on this current list certainly is deserving of—and I'm happy for each one of these individuals being able to go out, you know, when they are, with the backgrounds that they have. They've been exceptional folks in your district.
Yep. I would add overall experience of two hundred and thirteen years. I had to do a double take on that. It's pretty impressive. We should point out that this is really a first wave of retirements. Our retirement date is February fifteenth. We had these well in advance, so we wanted to get them to the board sooner, and we'll come forward at the twenty-fourth meeting with another group. I've already received a couple today, at least, so exciting times, as Mr. Holmes mentioned. The six teachers that we bring forward tonight are requesting the board accept their decision to retire at the end of the 1920 school year. First off is Julie Buscher, second grade teacher at County Line. She's taught at County Line Elementary School for the past thirty-seven years. Her forty-five years in education includes two years teaching at St. John's School in Edgar, one year at St. James School in Sussex, one year at St. Agnes in Milwaukee, and numerous years working as a substitute teacher. Lisa Giles, a third grade teacher at Rockfield Elementary. She's been at Rockfield for the past thirty-two years. In her thirty-four-year career, she also taught at St. Rose School in Milwaukee for—yeah, for one year. Anne Marie Kramer, special education teacher at Kennedy. Has taught special education at Kennedy for the past twenty years. Her thirty-two years in teaching includes twelve years in the Glendale River Hills School District. Julia Mink, special education teacher at Amy Bell. Serves as a cross-categorical teacher at various grade levels at Amy Bell for the past thirty-nine years. Colleen Showalter, third grade teacher at Rockfield Elementary. Has taught in the Germantown School District for the past thirty years. She taught special education at Amy Bell for eleven years and is a third grade teacher at Rockfield for the past nineteen years. Her thirty-six-year teaching career also includes six years of teaching special education in Oshkosh, which sees as six. And finally, Catherine Schwartz is a special education teacher at Rockfield Elementary School. She's served as a cross-categorical teacher at Rockfield for the past eighteen years. Her twenty-nine-year teaching career includes five years in Shorewood and six years in Milwaukee —Milwaukee. and six years in Milwaukee. She also worked for Easter Seals in their special education program for four years.
Great. I just had to follow up on what Mr. Holmes was saying. 176 years of education experience, 137 of those years within the Germantown School District. And when you look at 37 years, 32 years, 20 years, 30 years, 18 years, just think how many kids that those six teachers touched. How many moms and dads that participated in parent-teacher conferences? And possibly how many doctors and lawyers and astronauts that are out there because of these six teachers? I think it's pretty cool. You know, we're sorry to see them go, but we're very, very happy in the next chapter in their lives, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the request for retirement at the conclusion of the 2019-2020 school year for Julie Buescher, Lisa Gilde, Anne Marie Kramer, Julia Mink, Colleen Showalter, and Catherine Short, and to thank them for their many years of service to our school district.
Second.
Sir? Sir. Great. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to Item D, Discussion and Action to Approve Dean of Students Positions for the 2020-2021 school year. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Noah?
Thank you. As you may recall, at the conclusion of the 1920, I'm sorry, 1819 school year, we discussed the dean positions and bringing them forward sooner in the year in terms of committing to additional years, with this being the appropriate time to do so. You've been presented with background information about both positions. If you recall, this is the second year of the dean position at KMS and the first year of the dean position at high school. With both deans that are in place, we're seeing really what we had hoped relative to their ability to help us with attendance and discipline, to deal with situations in a prompt and effective manner. Deans at both schools in our dealings with them have demonstrated that they have the ability to communicate effectively with staff, parents, students, to build relationships, to, you know, foster that process. We're very happy with the direction of both positions. We've included commentary from Principal Clymer and Principal Farron. Additionally, I had, as well as Mr. Holmes, had, we had conversations, ongoing conversations, but we specifically had very intentional conversations about these roles recently. Really, at both sites, they're very excited about moving forward. So, we had asked that you accept our recommendation to move forward with the positions.
Great. Before you do that, Rick, can you speak to the financial piece in regard to the dean of students' position and where they currently reside within next year's budget?
Well, they'll be, I'll advance the salaries and, well, the employee compensation accounts forward in the usual manner which they were part of this year's budget. And I think there was a little bit of savings with respect to one of them, memory serves me right, but those numbers will be advanced in accordance with some increase relative to the CPI that the state promulges for next year's budget.
Great, thank you. Entertain a motion.
I move to approve the dean of students' positions for Kennedy Middle School and Germantown High School for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second.
Discussion? Sir?
First of all, thank you for the report, and I appreciate that, you know, we have the chance to reexamine this again because this is one of our relatively newer things as we've been trying to reorganize some of the leadership at both of the schools. And they've gone through a lot of changes and adjustments over time. And I know this was kind of a way of settling into some of that, where we have a little bit less in terms of administrative leadership because this is not an administrative position, and a little bit more towards still helping to make sure that things get taken care of. And I appreciate that, and I'm behind that. What I'm wondering is, what is your recommendation of when this would become just part of the annual conversation about everything instead of us specifically looking at this position each year? Because I'm not sure that it's appropriate for us for the next 10 years to, you know, just keep reexamining this on an annual basis at some point. It's either working or it's not working, and, you know, just move forward and allow the normal process like we would in the other position? Does that make sense?
It does, and I would suggest for probably at least next year, doing it one more time. Again, my concern, and why was so important to ask Rick about this, was because of budgetary reasons. Given what I currently know and what Rick's informing about is that the budget will support it. But for, I know you'll be, you'll be voting on that new superintendent for the district here in a few minutes. And it's one of those things for me, when that new superintendent comes in, you're probably going to want to go through the process at least one more year. And it would be a good exercise. I do appreciate what Principal Clymer and what Principal Farron included in the background. I do agree with their assessments of the position and what they've been able to accomplish at both schools with those positions in place. And I would let it go at least another year based on how it worked out at the end of 1819, so. It is a good exercise, and I do think you need those reports in there going.
Yeah, and I would echo that, just say that the inception of the position, at the inception, they've talked quite a bit about budgeting sorts of words to what we're doing today. And likewise, we're doing it now to be fair to the people in those positions relative to, you know, them knowing about their positions.
Yeah, I appreciate that. My other, only other thing that I guess I want to add is that I still feel strongly about these particular positions. And I'm not sure that our student population is going to change dramatically over the next few years. And I think we have shown that, you know, with the growth of our district and the needs of our district, that this kind of position seems to make a lot of sense to me. And I'm not sure that anything's going to change in a year, but I appreciate what you're saying about having that opportunity to reexamine them, so thank you.
Yeah, I think a couple of things to just point was budgetary. We know how tight the budget has been over the last couple of years, and we had this conversation about, okay, do we go down this path? And I think with the reports from the two principals, it's adding value. We had the same conversation with the school resource officers. Is that the right thing to do for our kids? And based on all indications, it is the right thing to do because we want to have safe and secure schools. We're going to have that conversation too, but there's got to be a point in time when we have better clarity on the budget. And Rick, you and your team has done a wonderful job over the many years, and we always have a balanced budget, a high bond rating. But we really have to, I guess, get alignment, not that we don't have alignment on this, but just include it with everything else. And that, we always have the opportunity going forward. If we don't like something, we could put it on the agenda, so. But I would agree, for your replacement, I think it's the right thing to do, so.
Further conversation? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item E, Discussion and Action to Approve Contracts. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Noah?
Thank you. We have one contract to bring forward this evening, a limited-term contract for English teacher Julia Culver. This is being, she is the recommended candidate to fill in the vacancy created by an FMLA leave. This is a limited-term position, 46 days, the amount of $12,523. We ask that you approve the 1.0 FTE limited-term contract for Julia Culver at $12,523.
Entertain a motion.
I move to approve the 1 FTE limited-term contract for Julia Culver
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And Mike, I'm going to have to correct you. We don't have just one contract. We've got two contracts to approve tonight.
You gotta be worried.
Discussion and action to approve the superintendent contract. I think I will take the lead on this. We're at that point where the board will make a decision for our next superintendent, not just for tomorrow or the following year, but we hope to have for a very long career with us. We started this process almost a year ago, when you announced your retirement. When Mr. Holmes announced that he was retiring. We immediately engaged at an outside firm to assist us with the search. We partnered with the community, many, many surveys, many, many town halls. The board, I believe it was January 23rd, we had our final three interviews over at MacArthur. And we walked out of MacArthur, I believe, at 11:45 PM with a decision. And I'm pleased to say that the board made the decision to move forward with Brett Stauslin. Brett is currently the superintendent at the Barnaville School District. He's been the superintendent there for the last five years. He's got a wonderful career in education from a principal, assistant principal, to a teacher in biology, and we're really excited about that. Brett comes to us with a BA from Lawrence University, an MA from University of Wisconsin-Madison, and he's working on his PhD degree, and we hope to have, he hopes to have that probably over the summer, maybe. We're keeping our fingers crossed, okay? So, we're really excited about moving forward with Brett. I think he's going to do some wonderful things the Germantown way, so we're excited about that. Before we have you come up, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I move to approve the hire of Mr. Brett H. Stauslin as the new superintendent of the Germantown School District with a two-year contract and appointment to commence on July 1, 2020.
Second.
Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Brett, come on forward.
Come on down.
Come on down.
I'm looking for a fee waiver. I think I might have to come to every meeting because Mr. Holmes, I see what he puts on my plate. Well, first of all, I'm delighted to be here. Feel honored to be part of the district moving forward and hope to learn a lot from Mr. Holmes before he leaves. And Mike has been my sidekick here for the last few weeks, going back and forth and trying to keep things quiet in my own district. But we've done some great things in the district I'm coming from and hope to carry that, and carry this Germantown way forward here in the next many years. And I also, I did bring my wife with me because when I signed the contract, she signs it too. She has to put up with the long nights and everything that goes with it. So, we're excited about moving here. We started looking for homes and all that stuff, and we got to move fast because things are flying off the shelf. But it's exciting, and I think the things I've learned already from our, from the building principals, on the tours, and working with the board, just a couple of times I've been able to meet with them, it's going to be, going to be awesome.
Well, we're really excited that you're here. We look forward to all the wonderful things you're going to do to move the district forward. It's going to be a fun time, so. Comments from the board?
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
And what we will do, we'll do a, I'm going to be sending a all-district email out tonight notifying all staff on the decision that the board made. We'll be doing a press release tomorrow morning as well.
Great.
So, and maybe we should do something via Skype or just...
We can do that.
Yeah.
And before you leave, make sure to smile pretty for the cameras.
Everything on TV. Thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome. Congratulations. Okay, moving on to Item G, Discussion and Action to Approve the DECA travel request.
Yes, I would like to bring to the board's attention the following requests from Principal Farron. The Germantown High School DECA students and advisors, Vinnie Daniels and Steve Martin have submitted their overnight travel request to attend the DECA State Conference and Competition, March 10th through the 12th, 2020, at the Grand Geneva Hotel and Resort in Lake Geneva. Mr. Daniels has arranged to have, to share chaperones of the female students with female DECA advisors from Slinger for that purpose. So, that works out quite well. It actually saves the district money not having to take along extra. And besides that, the DECA crowd's not that bad a crowd of students, so. They are requesting for 26 state DECA students and two advisors to travel to Lake Geneva, March 10th through the 12th, 2020, to attend the DECA State Conference and Competition with transportation and advisor costs paid through district funds.
I move to approve the travel request as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Sir?
Is DECA an acronym? I think it was way back in the day, but now they're just DECA, as far as I know. I have never heard them called anything else. It's kind of like FFA, you know? They're not Future Farmers of America anymore. They're just FFA. So, DECA is DECA.
And we know that you have a large appetite for acronyms too.
So, refresh my memory, what's it, for the, for the folks at home?
It's distributive education.
They do accounting, business kind of things, a variety of law. There's some law I think in there as well. There's some public speaking that goes on.
Marketing.
So, the official definition, Mike, is distributive education clubs of America. It's an association of marketing students that encourages the development of business and leadership skills through academic conference and competition.
Okay. I just wanted to check. I knew that. It just wasn't defined here for folks at home.
And I hope that we can approve them going to the national gathering.
Yes.
They usually get a chance to do it in another few weeks, so good luck to them.
Great. Entertain a motion.
You got it.
You got it?
Oh, we did. Discussion, yeah. Well, he got me all excited. Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Entertain one more motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:47. Thank you all for coming tonight, and please drive home safe.